We are here for power of living on tonight. Thank God for each and every person that is here in the house of God and asking that as we go through our lesson that we be prayerful. Our first background reading will come from Isaiah forty-third chapter, the eighteenth verse. Isaiah forty-three and eighteen. Our next scripture will come from Luke, the ninth chapter, the sixty-second verse. Luke nine sixty-two. Second Corinthians five and seventeen. Second Corinthians five and seventeen. Hebrews six, ten and eleven. Hebrews six, ten and eleven. And our devotional reading will come from Ecclesiastes, first chapter, the eleventh and twelfth verse. Ecclesiastes, the first chapter, the eleventh through the twelve verse. Our subject for tonight is things that need to be forgotten. Will someone read for me Isaiah forty-three and eighteen? Hold up, excuse me. Prayer. Father God, we come before you first to say thank you, Lord, for this opportunity to come into your house of grace. Lord, we thank you for your word. We thank you for this lesson, Lord. We ask it as we embark on the lesson, Lord, that we eat of it, Father God, that it may edify you in us. In Jesus' name we pray, amen. Isaiah forty-three and sixteen.
Eighteen.
Yes, eighteen, excuse me.
Remember ye not the things, not the former things, neither consider the things of old.
Okay. Somebody want to give us a light on that?
Your past is your past and you should just go forward and don't remember the past.
Amen, amen, forgetting those things that are behind and reaching forth to the things that are before us. Anyone else? Okay. Luke nine and sixty-two.
Jesus replied, no one who puts his hand to the plow and looks back is fit for service in the kingdom of God.
Okay, what is this saying?
Note that basically like, I'm not sure what you're saying about looking back. There's no way you can look back and still have your hand towards God if you're constantly looking back. You're not seeing the blessings that God has for you or your purpose that he has set before you because you're constantly looking back behind.
Looking back at the past, the things of the past.
Right.
Some of what we was talking about last week when I was saying that I was always condemning myself with the things of the past. And if you're living in the past, you definitely can't live in the future and that's in God, you know, so when you make a change in your life, you gotta forget those things. Not so much that, you know, that you don't remember them, but, but beating yourself up and you know, tearing yourself down and I'm not good enough and I'm not able and because none of us is able unless God, unless God gives his Holy Spirit to accomplish what he has set for us to do. So, yeah, yes.
When I read that verse, I was thinking about when I was growing up and my father was a farmer, one of them old time farmers. And he had a plow. He had a mule named Buzzard. Okay, and when he would plow, I used to love to watch him plow. Because he put that plow and then it go in the ground and then to turn that ground over. And he make long rows and they was always straight. And I just knew that when this says, put your hand to the plow. That's not, that's not an easy thing to do, to plow. That's a lot of hard work. So, we can't think that when we say, he says, if you look back, you ain't fit for the kingdom of God because you're not. You gotta keep going. It takes some stamina to keep going. And so, I wrote down some things here that came to my mind. That what we have to do when we putting our, when we holding that plow in the ground. You gotta have faith. You gotta have loyalty. You gotta have trust. You gotta have steadfastness. Don't give up when things get bad and you said, the devil got me this. No, he does not. Okay, that's when you got to dig in deeper. And then you gotta have stamina and, and you gotta have persistence. Okay, so that, that kind of character is not, it's not a fly by night thing. It's built up. You get your stamina through your trials and tribulations. Once you see what God has done for you before, when another big wave comes, you can say, well, I seen what he done before and I know he can do it again.
Amen.
That's so true. I was, when you were saying that, I was just thinking about as you were saying, as you plow and the Bible tells us, we look to him. So even as you, if we're looking back, then you're not looking for him. So you can't build his kingdom because you're not looking to him to build it.
Right.
So you're still, you're looking back and it's not so much as forgetting the past, but remember the experience. Not necessarily the actions or the behavior, but you remember God brought me through that. And that's where that faith comes in because you can remember the experience. I went through this and he brought me through that. So I got the faith, like she was saying, that stamina to keep, it gives you that little unction. When you do get tired, you have little something to fall back on and be like, you know, I know he can do this because he brought me out yesterday. So I know he can handle today.
Amen, amen. Anybody else have anything? Okay, second Corinthians five and seventeen.
Therefore, if any man be in Christ, he is a new creature. All things are passed away. Behold, all things become new.
Amen. So if, if, if we're in Christ, we're a new creature. We've become new. Things that we used to do, we don't want to, we desire not to do again. We're walking in a new way, in a new life. We see things differently. God has made us, created us, creating us a clean heart and a right spirit before him. So, we're doing things that God would have us to do. And walking in newness of life. And this is what my commentary says. It says, what Paul particularizes in verse sixteen, he generalizes in verse seventeen. Paul could no longer think of Christ in purely carnal terms. In flesh, okay? Because of the universal truth that has been applied to him personally. That is, when a man comes into vital union with the risen and glorified Lord, he is a new creation. And perceives Christ in a new way. Things of God in a whole different way, you know, the things that we used to, how we used to live and things we used to think of, we don't think of that way anymore, you know. We, we don't live in that way anymore. We don't particularly thrive in that way anymore. Everything is new, everything, because if you think about it, when you get saved, you see things differently. You know, you look, you look at the world differently. You look at people a different way, you know. And so, it's brand, it's brand new. You become a brand new creation. Anybody else?
Oh gosh, it's so beautiful. When you come in, when you're trying to do everything your way. And you done tried everything your way and it didn't work, trying to put that square pig in that round hole. And you say, okay, Lord, I give up. You can, you go ahead, you take over and you submit yourself. You let that carnal man go because it just ain't working for you. It's, it's sad that so many of us have to get to that point. It just ain't working for you. So you gonna try a new thing. And so you say, I'm gonna let the Lord take over. And at first you don't believe that he can really take over because you don't know how. You don't know where you're taking you, which direction. I need to know what direction you fixing to take me. And so, once I had, I had to give that up and trust. Trust through trials and tribulations and learn to trust that God knows the way even when you don't. And so when you say, well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna submit myself. I'm gonna let this carnal man go because it's not working for me. And I'm gonna give myself to the Lord. I'm gonna give to that spiritual part of me that's only in God. And so when you do that, and it's not an easy thing to do, it's a journey. It's a transformation. You start coming to Bible study. You start going to Sunday school. You start going to church. You start fellowshipping with other members. And next thing you know, you stop going to the club. You stop going to the gambling casino because I was there on Tuesdays and Thursdays. And you stopped doing all that stuff. And I was wondering how come my pockets start getting fat? That's because I wouldn't giving all my money away. Yeah, because you'd be so engrossed in the things that are carnal that you can't see the spiritual. And so, once you start seeing the spiritual side of life, that's where, where you get all the joy and the happiness and the abundance and all. There's so many things the Lord promises you if you come over to his team. So when you come over on God's team, then you see a transformation in yourself. Other people can see that transformation. And then you have a strength to continue on and see what the end gonna be.
And Sister Betty, as you were saying that that's where your faith, faith is the substance of things hoped for and the evidence of things now you've seen, okay? Because when you're working on it, when you're walking in faith, you may not understand where you're going. But you have faith enough to know that wherever you're going, God's gonna lead, guide and strengthen you to get there. And so we, as we take on, let the Holy Spirit lead and guide us, then we become strong in the things that used to make us do things that we shouldn't have been doing, you know. So, when we, as we walk in this life and we have the faith and the trust of God in us, even though we don't understand what's going on or why, why things are going the way they're going. If you wait on the Lord, he will renew your strength and he will take you where you need to go. But you have to keep look, keep your eyes on the prize and the prize is Jesus Christ.
And I was just thinking as you all was talking, is that it is a process. And sometimes when we first come in to believe and give our lives over to God, Christ, we want everything right now and think that, oh, if I make this mistake, then I done failed. But it's a process and he tells us every day we have to kill flesh. It's not some, we don't just do it one time, you know. And sometimes it may be seven, eight times a day that you might have to, you know. And that's why we have to give ourselves that grace that God gives us. Because it is a process and learning to trust him and, you know, because he tells us no weapon will form against us shall prosper. We're gonna have these things, but sometimes we are a weapon. We are the weapon against our own self. And he gives us the grace against our own selves that it's not gonna prosper. And so that gives us that faith and that trust and that confidence, like I can go a little bit further and get you on.
And, and as you were speaking, Sister Sharon, what I heard was I give myself away. I have to surrender. I have to surrender because if I don't surrender, I'm not the things that God would want me to do, I'm not gonna be able to do because I'm be trying to do them within myself. And, and what we have to understand, the things that we need from the Lord, we gotta give it away. We gotta give ourselves away. We gotta surrender. We gotta, you know, we gotta be humble before the Lord so that we can receive the things that we desire from the Lord. And if we don't, if we're not gonna do those things, all we're gonna do is fight a battle and it's not, we're not gonna win.
And one thing I learned is a pastor taught me that when we were at a Bible study, a pastoral teacher. I think we had Bible study. Anyway, he came that night and I was telling him about, I was just talking in general about how I start gambling. I did this, but I couldn't stop smoking. See what I'm saying? I couldn't stop smoking. I was, I was doing what, I was, I was getting ahead of myself. You don't do the work. God does the work. Yeah, the transformation comes when, when I stopped smoking, the Holy Spirit told me. It came to me. Yeah, so he had been after me for a long time, but I never knew to reach out and open my heart and stop doing what you're doing. Sit down somewhere and listen because he talks to you, but you'll never hear him because you too busy listening to your radio, talking to your friends, calling such and such to get some advice. Sit down somewhere and let the Lord do his work. Because the transformation is done when the Holy Spirit, when you sit down, get down and pray and you talk to the Lord. Pray, 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 pray. I can't stress praying enough. When you communicate with the Lord and ask him to send the Holy Spirit into your heart so that it can do the work that you can't do, then that's when your whole world opens up like a flower. Yeah, it blossoms. I'm just amazed and I see, I'm looking at me. I can't even focus on.
Nobody else?
Yeah, because even when, even when I'm dirty and I know that I have to confess and tell the Lord, clean up my mouth, you know, clean up my, I'm gonna talk to Sister Charlotte so crazy. I, I gotta go apologize to Sister Charlotte, you know what I mean? So that the Lord can continue to bless me. And I'm glad that I recognize when I'm out of line. So when you get out of line, you had to bring yourself back on the submission.
Amen, amen. Hebrews, the sixth chapter, the tenth and the eleventh verse. For God is not unrighteous to forget your work and labor of love, which ye have shew toward his name, in that ye have ministered to the saints and do minister. And we desire that every one of you do show the same diligence to the full assurance of hope unto the end. And I'm gonna read verse twelve. May ye be not slothful, but followers of them who through faith and patience inherit the promises. So God is not unrighteous to forget our work and labor of love. So, when we submit ourselves to the Lord and take on his attributes, then we're doing what the work that he would have us to do, you know. We're not gonna be caught up in selfishness or backbiting or any of the things that come of the flesh, pride, you know, all those things. We're not gonna be caught up in those things. Those things are things of the past. Because now I'm looking at where God has sent me and where he's sending me and what he's done through me. Because what we have to understand is that when God begins a good work in you, okay? It's a good work. He's gonna bring it to pass. Everything that God sets forth in our lives, he's gonna bring it to pass. All we gotta do is be still and know that he's God, you know, what Sister Betty was saying. To know that, that God is, he's the worker. He's the one, the workman of our souls. And that, you know, the things that we stand in need of, God is going to work in us to accomplish the things that he has desired for us to do. And all we have to do is be steadfast and immovable, working in the will of the Lord, doing his work. So that when the things that are done in us will be, give him the glory and all the, and all the honor. It won't be, look at me, look what I'm doing, you know, because we are a powerful people. And when we accomplish something, we think we done done something, but if it hadn't been for the Lord, that was on my side, tell me where would I be, you know? So, just to, just to have his way as he works in us to take out their righteousness because he's righteous. And if we take him on, we become the righteousness of him, not of ourselves.
And you know, that just brings, makes me think of when God has given us directive, like we spoke before, of when God has taken you somewhere and you feel like you're, you're not competent enough or educated enough or well, well spoken, then you're saying that God's not worthy that you have. And so then you allowing him and just doing it out of his love, then he, he's gonna get the glory because you're not. You alone is not, like you said, we are not capable. None of us have the strength if it wouldn't be for him. And that allows him to, his love to show. And that's what the scripture is letting us know. If you do out of these things and keep my commandments, do as I have you to do out of the love, all these promises are gonna be yours because you're doing it out of love. And you don't hear, well, she didn't speak that song or she didn't hit that note on that song. You won't hear, that doesn't even bother or it doesn't, you don't hear it. You won't, it won't even faze you because you don't think about that. You get out of yourself. And that's what, and you know, like it's telling us, we have to get rid of the carnal man because we have to kill flesh in order to have his love. Because, you know, man is always gonna, well, she was doing this over here, so I don't know if I should speak to her, you know. You will have something, that's why you do have to kill flesh to allow his love to abide in us so that we are able to show other people to rise up to his kingdom, to help build his kingdom.
Sister Betty, you have anything you wanna add? All right, we're gonna move on to our devotional Ecclesiastes, first chapter, the eleventh and twelfth verse. There is no remembrance of former things, neither shall there be any remembrance of things that are to come with those that shall come after. I, the preacher, was king over Israel in Jerusalem.
Let me go ahead and read a little bit more. Want me to read another verse or two that kinda leaves it at a?
Yes, go ahead.
And I gave my heart to seek and search out my wisdom concerning all things that are done under heaven. This sore travail hath God given to the sons of man to be exercised there within. I have seen all the works that are done under the sun, and behold, all is vanity and vexation of spirit. That which is crooked cannot be made straight, and that which is wanting, wanting cannot be numbered. I communed with thine own heart, saying, lo, I am come to great estate and have gotten more wisdom than all they that have been before me in Jerusalem. Yea, my heart had great experience of wisdom and knowledge. And I gave my heart to know the wisdom and to know madness and folly. I perceived that this also is a vexation of spirit. For in much wisdom is much grief, and he that increaseth knoweth edge, increaseth sorrow.
So what do we, what do we get from this scripture? We're talking about Solomon here. And he, he looked at the vexation of spirit and it occurs in the book seven times. And it can't contain the idea of fruitlessness or futileity. So everything that, that we see as far as the world is concerned, it ain't got no gain to you. It ain't got no gain to you. If it's not from God, if it's not of God, there's no gain. Everything else is, is a fixation. And vexation is something that's going to cause you to be always wondering, always troubled. And you can look at life and see that, you know what I'm saying? You can look at life and see, you know, when you, when you're raising your children, you're trying to figure out which way should you go with them. When you have a husband, you're trying to keep that thing together, you know, just everyday life. Vexation is something that vixes the spirit of you. And so, if your spirit is always in trouble or always at trouble, then you have no peace. You know, there's no peace. There's no peace of mind. There's no joy, you know. So, what we have to do is keep our hearts and our minds toward God so that we can have those things. Because the answer is not of the world. The answer is in Christ. Anybody else?
Yeah, I got a lot to say on this one. Everything on earth is temporary. And when I think about temporary, when I go down Lincoln Street and I make that right on Slater and I see where I worked for thirty years at the state school. And it's gone. There's not a remnant. I said, I wish I could have got a brick or something. You know, because if I didn't know that I worked there.
Then it wouldn't be there.
It was like there is nothing to, to symbolize all the struggle. All the times I was late running fifty miles per hour trying to get to work on time. All the people that I fought with trying to, trying to do this and do that. And you know, all of that was just vanity because they don't remember. Because they don't remember, I don't remember. So I'm just saying, everything on earth is temporary. And then when we think about, when we apply it to other things like, uh, like I was telling you last week, how I was waiting for my father, who's eighty some years old on his deathbed. But I waited, and when he was like in his seventies, to apologize for mistreating me. And he never did. He just left me holding the bag, you know? And then when his mind went, he had all the time, he, he didn't know who he was. So how was he gonna apologize? It was all vanity. So when people mistreat you or you feel like you've mistreated them, apologize to them while you're still in your right mind. And then like if your children, you can't, when they tell me the story about how I was when they was growing up, I don't remember that, Betty. So I was like, don't even bring it on. Bring it up, you know, like who I was, because I'm not that same person. We're all evolving. We're all growing. And the only way that we can really, uh, take this whole life seriously is to stay in the spirit, enjoy the moment, and, um, enjoy the blessings that God has given you every day. Is giving you every day.
And the song that came to mind is, uh, as we was reading this, is James Cle- Cleveland. Everything must change, nothing stays the same. Nothing stays the same, you know? So, um, you know, we're so set on, how things are supposed to be or how we think things are supposed to be and how things are supposed to stay. You know, because, and I, and this is mine, uh, I never thought that I would outlive my sister. You know, I never thought that she'd be gone. So when that reality hit me, I was like, I'm by myself. I don't have her anymore, you know? So those things that, um, we bank on, you know, it might change. And then what you gonna do? How you, you know, where you gonna go? How you gonna get there, you know? So, um, I just, if it wasn't for the Lord, who was ta, who's been taking me through, I'd be lost, you know? And that's, that's pretty much how the world is, you know? When, when we bank on one thing, when we see thing one way, okay? Then where we gonna go? Where we go, you know, what's the next step I made? How am I gonna get there, you know? So it can't be, I'm looking at the possibilities of what if, you know? I have to look at the possibility of what is. You know, because we just, we bank, we, we put our, our, we see things in one way and God sees things bigger than us, greater than us, you know? So not saying I don't miss her. I miss her every day, but I know I have to go on. I can't die with her.
And then we're so stuck on control. We think we have to control everything and control everybody around us. You need to control your children. And in essence, really, you're not controlling nothing. God is in control. That's why we have to take everything to the Lord. And it's, it's just amazing to me when you find out that you're not in control, God is in control, then you gotta start thinking a whole nother way. Yes, because, uh, when I first started reading the Bible, I started ta, I was taking it literally, just literally. One-way thinking, one-way streak. It has so many stories, they're told in different ways, different characters, but it's the same story to me. Like it's over and over again. It's like until you get it, I'm gonna tell it to you these different ways. And it's up to you to, to be enlightened by the word. And he revealed it to you eventually, if you're ready for it.
That, that's the reason why the scripture that says, submit your ways unto the Lord. Because our, we, we have to submit our ways to the Lord. Because our ways, our ways will get us in trouble, okay? And so we have to submit our ways to the Lord in order for him to guide us. Because if we don't, if, if we stay in the, in the block that we put ourself in, then we're gonna fail, okay? But if we submit our ways to the Lord, our thoughts, our feelings, our emotions, everything about us, if we submit it to the Lord, the Lord will bring us out. But we have to surrender all. We have to, because if we don't, we'll be in big trouble. And then we'll wonder why, why, I, I, what did I do? How did I get here, you know? And, and it's not that God is punishing us, but we don't want to, like you said, we don't, we wanna be in control of everything and we don't control anything. And that's what we have to learn is that whatever way God has us to go, if we just stand still and see the salvation of the Lord, he'll bring us, bring it to pass, you know what I'm saying? But we, um, we're prideful people and all that and God is not pleased, you know? Pride comes before fall. So if we're not doing what God would have us to do, how he would have us to do it, then we're going to be in trouble. Anybody else? No? Okay. Our central verse, brother and I count not thyself to have apprehended, but this one thing I do, forgetting those things which are behind. Philippians three thirteen, King James Version. And, uh, no dear brothers and sisters, I have not achieved it, but I focus on this one thing, forgetting the past and looking forward to what lies ahead. Philippians three thirteen, New Living Translation. Uh, key terms, forgetting to lose the remembrance of, to be unable to think of or recall, failing to remember, hold in mind or keep in one's thoughts. Past having existed or taken place in a period before the present or former time or event. Former coming before in time, having once been. I'm gonna read the introduction and then I'm gonna ask that, uh, everybody, uh, read a paragraph. There are many things that hinder believers' walk with God, and the main one is holding on to the past. The past is exactly that, the past. The past is something that is finished, completed, and no longer exists. It means something that existed before the present time or was used in an earlier time. Past refers to a time that has gone by recently. So believers must understand that the past is over and it needs to be forgotten most of the time. Holding on to past events or happenings can cause believers to become trapped in past memories and that limitation, and put limitations on their lives. Then they cannot move on to the future. Many of them are hurt, bitter, wounded, and saddened by things they, that they had to go through and endure in the past. The past can become a grave that holds and controls their lives in time, causing them to be trapped in a place of helplessness. It is emotionally unhealthy for believers to hold on to some things from the past that have no value to their future lives. So Paul tells the believer to forget some of the things that had happened in the past and press to build a healthy future. He knew he had to get a hold of himself and forget how the other disciples had treated him. He had to forget the educational achievements that he had accomplished, which were not recognized among the brethren, and remember the different situations he encountered. Sometimes believers find themselves in situations they cannot change. So they must completely cut their losses, forget about those situations, and move on. And that would be a good, 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 good advice to give to anybody, because you can't change your past. You can't change nothing back there. You did, you did it, it's done, it's over, you know? And, um, like I was saying on last week, it hinders you. It's a hindrance, you know? If you're not going to move on past, uh, what I did last week that wasn't right, then you're gonna be stuck. Like, you know, putting a stick in the ground and, and putting it down so far that you can't move it. That's, that's where you are, you know? So we have to be, you know, ask for forgiveness, ask, you know, if, if you have to or if you can, go to the person or the people that you, you've done something to, if you've done it to yourself, ask for forgiveness, you know? Because sometimes we'll go and ask somebody else for forgiveness, but forget about ourselves. And then there we are, and we are not moving no further, you know? So, you know, um, just, just doing what God has called us to do and how he's called us to do it and making us a new creation. You know, every day, like Sister Sharon was saying, every day is, is a task for us to put away the flesh so that we can move on and become better people in God and not be sorrowful for the mistakes that we've made, because we beat each, beat ourselves up daily when we do things, you know? And we don't understand why we did those things. But regardless of what we've done, we gotta move on.
That is very true. That's one thing I struggle with daily, is putting the past in the past. I, I'm, I'm really working on that myself. As my grandpa would say, you can't cry over spilled milk. What's done is done.
Amen. And you can't change it.
And I believe there's just a lot of us, there's a lot of things that, um, people in general have done or have been done to, or even in your childhood. You know, you can think of, now that you know, you have more tools under your belt than what your parents had under their belt. So like, um, Sister Betty was saying, she was waiting on an apology from her father, you know? And just like he tells us, everything that's carnal is gonna pass away. And like she just said, you know, he developed Alzheimer's, couldn't even remember how, you know? If he mistreated, he couldn't even remember that. So you're sitting here and you're gonna be stuck waiting on something that that person can't even remember, you know? And that's one thing, you know, pastors preaches a lot on is, you know, there's people in their grave and you still mad at them, they gone. And you still holding the gr- you know? You walk it on and, and it's, you think about it and you just think, it sounds so simple and it sounds so comical that I'm holding on to something and they've gone on and they are, they're living their life and you're stuck there. And it's like, and then you have to really look, it's like, are you really that simple? Like, wake up, you know? And you have to talk to yourself and remember that it is the past. You can't go back and change it, you know? And that's why, um, I believe, you know, Paul wrote this and saying, you know, some things you're just gonna have to forget, you know? And leave it there. That's the reason why, you know, if you picture yourself driving, your rearview mirror, it tells you, things in this mirror appear smaller, cause it doesn't matter what's behind you, you know? And you're going forward, that's why you got a big windshield so you can see what's in front of you. And that's what God wants you to see. With him, you have all of this.
What's before you? What was I gonna say? I had a thought, because, and also in that, when we hold on to things, that's Satan's weapon against us, okay? You gotta remember that when, uh, we gotta remember that when, when we keep going over things, over and over things, it's not to build us up, it's not to, um, you know, loosen us from the, from whatever it was. It's just to keep us stuck where we're at, you know? So we, so it would, it would be who us as a people to say, okay, it happened, it's over, it's done, you know? And now I need to go on. And I need God to guide me, because we can't do it by ourselves. And that's, that's the one thing that we oftentimes forget, because we play hurt things over and over and over. Because I can, I can testify from, uh, of that from my teenage years. I'm seventy years old. Why is that even there? You know what I'm saying? So we have to be careful of, of what we, we feed ourselves and what we eat on every day, because those things are there to hinder us, to keep us where we're at, not to move on.
Oh yeah, you just said it. The battlefield is in the mind. That's where it's at. And once you, uh, cause I could replay that record, I wake up in the middle of the night and that, I can't believe she said that. I can't believe she did that. It's just playing like a record, round and round. Next thing you know, you mad at the world. You're starting all over again. And then when you go out here in the world and somebody say something, you add that to the record. And it's going round and round. Yeah, and then, uh, you, you're not moving past. But the first thing you need to recognize is it's not real. It's not real. Yeah, God is real. This stuff is just, just to hinder you. You gotta watch what's going on in your mind. And then I was thinking the other day, I gotta add this to my daughter-in-law. And I've been mad with her for a minute. And so I said, well, God, you know, like, I know she was sick. So I said, okay, well, I call you, how you doing? If there's anything you need, uh, call me and I'll, you know, I'll get it for you or whatever you need, I'm here for you. She was just as shocked as I was that those words came out of my mouth. And then later on, I get this long text message and telling me, explaining about a situation that I had said some negative things about three days ago. So my good thing that I did today was negated by something that I said three days ago. And instead of me getting mad, I was like, you know, because we as humans are so fickle. We forget how fickle we are. But God is constant. His love is constant. See, if I had a done three days ago, you know, not talked, not beat her down behind her back, cause I ain't thinking to get back to her. I'm saying, if I had a done what the Lord tells us to do, then it wouldn't have negated the good that I did do, you see? That's why we have to stay, we have to remember to stay constant in our walk. Stay constant about the words that you say. Stay constant about the deeds that you do. Stay constant, just stay constant. You gotta stay focused, you gotta stay in alignment. This ain't no today thing. This is a everyday, all-day thing, staying in alignment with what the Lord would have us do. Because if you hurt your brother, you're also hurting God. He tells you that.
And that's why, you know, as you were saying that, it just made me think of, like the scripture said, we, even though we respond in positivity and it comes back in negativity, we still gotta do it out of love. We still gotta continue showing love. Because at the end of the day, it's how we respond. You can come back to me being negative and I'm still gonna come back to you with love. I'm still gonna give you love, because the scripture just told us, our works of love will not be forgotten. He's not gonna forget that. So it's what we do is how we respond. It's not, oh, well, so-and-so said this. He's not gonna ask you about so. He's gonna ask, what did Sharon do, you know? Hold Sharon accountable for what Sharon does. And that's one thing, it's hard, you know, like you said, as people, we forget how, how we are, really how, when we get in Christ and we try to get into the word and we're doing what we think we know that's right, and somebody come back, no, well, I'm just gonna say this. I'm gonna say it in a nice way, but I'm still gonna, no? And like, you know, like, um, and the next thing, we have to sit down and be quiet sometime, you know? Like you were saying, so we can hear God, you know? Because we wanna respond out of flesh at the end of the day. And that's why when we do, um, I was just telling one of my friends today, these text messages, however you receive it, whatever kind of mood you in at the time, is how you're gonna receive that message. I can say, how you doing, Sister Betty? But if you in a, oh, she being smart, she knows some, she knew something. She gonna ask me how I'm doing, because that's the mood that you're in at that time. And it's like, we have to, and then you come back with something. I'm like, where'd that come? But then now I'm gonna have a negative mood, because she, no. And that's when we have to catch ourselves. That's why it says we have to respond. How we respond and show love, constant. Like you said, it has to be constant, it has to be consistent. And when we find ourselves trying to allow flesh to rise, we know we out of alignment. If it's anything I've learned from myself, if it's anything Sharon wants to say, then it ain't right. It ain't right.
Amen.
You know, I need to wait a minute, pray about it, and then come back. Because if I respond too quick, then I might hurt you. And like you said, we can't offend our, we have to learn what we can't offend our brothers and sisters and realize that we need each other, regardless if you're the pastor, you're the deacon, or you the lay member, what, we need each other. We're all of the members of Christ and we, everybody has a part. And we have to. We're all of the members of Christ and we, everybody has a part and we have to understand that one person's not bigger than the other person and we need to show each other that love. And that's why I love the Bible study where you learn and you get to that time of that fellowship, like you said, when you first coming in, learning the Bible and you start fellowship, then it reminds you not to, it negates you from going to certain places 'cause I have to be here, you know? Now you have a yearning to be here, "Oh, I've got a yearning to see this person, I've got to..." Whether it's just a hire, you know, send this person a text or something, like you have to do some, that when you start doing things out of love and having God fulfill and moving in God's way, then all that other stuff, you don't have that free time anymore to listen to that gossip and entertain certain things that's not gonna feed you.
Amen, amen. And, and when you was talking about being offended, we are offended very easily, you know? We take offense of everything, you know? If she looked at me, she looked at me, you know, um, and it may not be that she was even looking at you, she might've been looking past you.
Absolutely.
You know? I mean, but, but we are, we're very offended people, you know? And we have to learn to quit taking offense to everything because when you take offense, then you shut yourself off.
Absolutely.
You know? And then the thing that might've been the problem can't be solved because you're walking around offended by something you don't even know what's going on, you know? So, and, and that's the reason, and the reason I know this is because I was sitting in this church one Sunday and I looked at a person and the Holy Spirit hurried up and told me, "Take no offense." Hurry up, and told me, "Take no offense." So now when I come into the sanctuary or wherever I'm at and people are in whatever mood they're in, I don't take any offense to what they're doing or how they're feeling because I don't know what happened before they got here. You know, so, so I'm not gonna take offense that you're, you're offended at me. So if I'm, if you're offended at me and I take offense, what's gonna come out of it?
Amen, amen. I agree. I'm working on that with myself, my mouth. Yes, I am. It's, it's a work in progress, but I mean no harm. But the text messaging, I have to laugh because that's me all over. But I don't mean no harm, so I take a step back and I read it again before...
Before you react, yeah.
Yes, ma'am. And then as, as Sister Betty was saying, how she has to go back and apologize to her friend, and I am that person because I mean no harm, but some things just come out of your mouth the wrong way that you don't mean, you know, at that moment 'cause you taking offense, you know, when, when the problem ain't about you.
But the offense comes from Satan.
Yes.
Okay? You, you have to realize that anything that is gonna cause a disturbance or a problem between you and another person, that ain't God.
No, it ain't.
And you gotta take, you gotta take your time and say, "Hey, Lord, I don't know what this is, but you gonna fix it." And I thank you in advance.
And that's something that, you know, that's something as, I'm gonna say women, you know, we as women, we really have to get into a building each other up and celebrating women, um, and empowering each other and learning, because women go through so many different emotions. You know? So you don't know what's going on, what's happened that day, and like you said, a look could've been given and it could've just been a thought that was in a person's head and then you take offense and then you're, even if you go and try to correct it and ask the problem, now there's a situation that wasn't no situation there. Never, well, there was no problem between you and I, but now you done made it a problem between you and I, you know? And so, it's the part of just learning, like, God, 'cause God will lead you if you need to go. And He will send who needs to come to you to apologize or who you need to say I'm sorry to and forgive and, he will lead you if you allow him to work. But that's something that I know in a lot of women that we encounter, uh, don't wanna build each other up or, um, really get that emotional where we feel like something, "She's looking at me" or "She didn't have this" or "You didn't speak to me" or, you know, and it's, you know, a lot of times, and it gets so caught up, and I myself have been there, just been so caught up like, "Oh, she called her sister this and missionary that." Oh, you just Sharon. Why, why, why many di... You know, and it's like, "This she even really..." You know? Or so-and-so, so-and-so, she called her by her name and called you by, and you so-and-so. Well, you can't know my name, I ain't important enough, you know? And it's something that's simple, people really get offended and like, and that's why I have to, sometimes when I, um, was talking in our ministry, I was like, "I apologize if I offend anyone." I'm bad with names. I just, tell you from the jump straight out, I'm bad with names. So if I call you out, tell me what's your name, you know? That's one thing I do with my groups, "What do you like to be called?" You know? Just because your name is Suzie, you might wanna be called Kay, okay? That's what you like to be, that's what I want you to do. So, it's just knowing, knowing who you are and being able to have the God in you and just loving people, that's the main thing, is if we get the love of God in us, then all that easy offense, it won't happen. And, you know, like we was talking about last week, as soon as that thought comes, we have to cast it down. Because the longer we think about it, the harder it is to get over it. And you know, and that's like you were saying, when we forget, um, for, forget about those things, you know, when we forget about the childhood, "Here you are fifty, sixty years old, something happened to you at two years, you two years old in kindergarten, she took my crown and I don't like her now." We grown. But you know, there's still people walking around, "She mistreated me in kindergarten, I don't like..." Or "She was a mean kindergarten teacher, I never liked..." This woman is dead and gone and you still holding a grudge over this teacher? You know, and but you have to think about, that's why it all comes back, and the Bible says, the greatest commandment is to love. Love will cure everything if we have His love. His unconditional love is what we have to show people without conditions, just love them where they're at and for who they are.
Okay, but after this, we're gonna move on. Saying all that you said, all those things are childish things. All those things that you just mentioned are childish things. And so, tho, though that's a, uh, a childish mentality that we keep as grownups and think that we're grown, and then we look at our children and say, "Why are you acting like that? 'Cause you act like that."
I had to say one more thing. Just one more, y'all. Girl, I, I, we walking around, all of us are wounded.
Amen.
And I have to tell a story about a friend who offended me simply because when she laughed, I thought she was laughing at me. And she couldn't understand why I felt offended because it went back to childhood from being laughed at and told that you're dumb, you're stupid. So, something that was way back thirty, forty, how old am I? Forty years ago, no, longer than that, that came up into the future, I'm, I'll be sixty-four next, in a week and two weeks. But I, I mean, I got angry, I mean boiling angry, quick, because of something I had remembered from the past came into the future. And so then, I was like, 'cause we don't realize, like, I might say something to you and you might be wounded from something happened in childhood. We're all walking around here wounded people, so that's why we have to have a, try to have compassion for, um, the other person because you don't know what's happened in their life, they've been abused, assaulted, belittled, and we're all walking around here like wounded people and when somebody step on your toe and you try to bite their arm off, they don't even know where it's coming from.
And that's the importance of us getting into the Word, getting into the Word and getting ourselves built strong, letting God build us up so that we don't have to walk around, because it, you know, there's a saying, it's, "How does your past trauma show up in your present-day life?" So that's why, is you're constantly killing flesh daily, you're re-examining, that's why you have to transform, like you said, the transforming of the mind. God gives us a, when we, when He said, "Creating us a clean heart and renew a right spirit within us," He's gonna renew all that. So when we have God in us, that transforming of the mind, the renewing of the spirit, the all them things in the past is forgotten and you have to leave it there. Once we give our lives to Christ, He's never got, casted in the sea of forgiveness, He doesn't remember that. Why do we? We have Him in us, so why do we?
It's a badge. But anyway, but anyway, but, 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 but saying with, but, but giving answer to what you said, the only way that we're going to grow and become mature in Christ is to lay the things that easily beset us at His feet, okay? If you're not giving it over to Christ, it's gonna keep living, okay? So the only way that you can, uh, come from up under the weight of sin and the remembrance of it is to lay it at the feet of Jesus and ask Him to take care of it. Yes, yes. Okay, um, first paragraph, first two paragraphs, who wants to read?
I'm, I'll read. You wanna me read?
"The believer is told not to remember the former things because some of the things that they did as a sinner have no value to their future lives. For when he accepted Jesus Christ as His Lord and Savior, he became a new creature and the old things in his life had passed away. He now has a new life, so he must not consider things of old. He has not yet reached that perfect place in God, so he must continue to forget things from the past that keep him bound. He doesn't want his flesh to feast on the ungodly things of the past. Before salvation, believers did ungodly things that brought no glory to God and His kingdom. So some of those things need to be forgotten about. If he stole, let him steal no more, Ephesians 4:28. He should not discuss it or think about it, but instead fill his mind and mouth with godly praises. The believer must release the thought of pleasure and embrace a sense of joy that comes from God. He must not allow his flesh to dictate what he needs. Moses chose affliction with the people of God rather than enjoying the pleasures of sin for a season with Pharaoh. The book of Romans makes the believer aware that in his flesh there is nothing good, Romans 7:18. John tells the believer that all that is in the world is the lust of the flesh and the lust of the eyes and the pride of life, 1 John 2:16. It is vital in the life of the believer to make sure his flesh doesn't control his life."
"Embracing change is part of the process of forgetting the things that are behind. The believer must learn to view his past experiences as a part of his teaching process and learn from those experiences. It takes courage to release what is comfortable and familiar to embrace new and different things. God is faithful and He will allow the believer the grace to do so. The believer must learn to find peace, peace in the present. As he lets the past go, he must renew his hope and expectations, expectation with peace now and in the future. As God prepared Abraham for a new life, there were some things that he had to let go of so he could receive the blessings that God had in store for him. It is not always easy to forget the past, but with Jesus on your side, you can do all things."
Our conclusion, the believer must understand that forgetting the past is a process, whether it's a mistake, a loss, or something else holding him back, the believer must remember to leave the past behind and focus on the future. It takes time, and if the believer allows him, God will help him find the strength and motivation to embrace forgiveness and forget the past. The wise man said, "There is no remembrance of former things, neither shall there be any remembrance of things that are to come with those that shall come after," Ecclesiastes 1:11. So the believer must understand that nothing is so important that it should keep him bound. He must forget some things so that he can be free. Forgetting the past does not erase it, it just allows the believer, believer to move beyond the past. God gives the believer a future and a hope only after he forgives, forgets, and embraces God's love, grace, and understanding. Embracing God's grace releases a sense of freedom within the mind and heart of the believer and allows him to move ahead without the burden of his past. Amen. Why is it important to forget some things?
It's important to forget some things in order to move forward.
Amen. How can a person know what to forget?
Anything that's holding me down. If it's keeping you a separate, if it's keeping you separated from you and God's relationship, then you just, you need to let it go.
Well, I wrote it down, whatever limits and traps you in a cycle of hurt, pain, depression, oh, I got a whole list, sadness, victimization, abandonment, worthlessness, low self-esteem, you feel unloved, broken, I can't, fearfulness, isolation, trauma, all of that, let it go.
Let it go, let it go. Anybody else?
And I believe that's the importance of when we self-examine ourselves, you know? And that's why, you know, when it tells us to kill flesh daily, I keep saying that. But that's something for me that I'm constantly working on, is learning to seeing what it is that's holding me back, what, so that you don't have anything to ma, to disconnect. You may, you still going to Bible study, you still going to church, but there's something, you're not as connected, like there's a, not, you're not a 220, you might be at 140. Where is that extra vault that you need? What is not making that good connection to you and keeping you focused? So anything that is keeping you, like all the things you named, anything, you have to sit back and just reexamine yourself and like, is any of this, is this why I'm not prospering? Is this not why I'm not moving forward? Is this why I'm stuck at this season? You know, or, you know, when God gives us a lesson or something, is this why we're stuck right here? Is this why I'm stuck? Do I need to just reexamine? That's what I got from it.
But, but as you were speaking, what dropped in my spirit is just letting go. Just letting go because we, we try to figure things out, we don't have the answers, okay? And when, and when we're setting, when we're trying to prioritize this, this, and this, okay? When we're trying to, you know, put it in, in, in this category that we got for ourselves, you know, and we're taking each step and say, "Well, why is that this? And why is that this? And why is that this?" You don't have the answer or you wouldn't have the question, okay? So, you have to let it go. Like I said before, you gotta lay it at its feet. He'll give you the answer when the time is right. All you gotta do is keep moving.
You have to let, let the control, you trying to control everything. Let that go, let the control go.
I struggle with that question daily, I really do. How to let things, how to know when to let things go? I'm working on that myself because a lot of it is a hinder to keep me from going forward with...
Right, because if, if you keep looking at something, you have no control of it over, why do you keep looking at it?
Cause I'm looking for that apology, like she said, and, and it never happened.
Yeah, it does make sense.
How crazy it sounds, but then when you get home alone, like, "Nah, I know you can do this and we gonna fix..." But when you say it out loud, and that's why sometimes, you know, when you're, you always say, "How can you encourage someone else when you're feeling down?" And that same advice that you needed, you couldn't give yourself, but when you hear it, just like, "Oh, I needed that," you know?
Yeah, but it's, it's simple, you know? We make things harder than they, they need to be, you know? And we go through so many trials and tribulations within ourselves, beating ourselves up or, or trying to figure things out ourselves, that we forget that God has the answer, He is the answer, you know? And if we stop, if we, if we stop taking inventory of what we think we need to know, you know, then God will give the answer, you know?
I had to say one more thing about that, about that thing, about why do you think you need an apology from somebody else to rectify a problem? Yeah, yeah, I'm just saying you don't need that apology. I, I found out I did not need... Yeah, yeah, I'm just saying you don't need that apology. I, I found out I did not need that apology. And all the hate and all the stuff, I sat down one day on a piece of paper and a tablet and I wrote down all the things. I said, I hated my father. I mean, strong hate. And I sat down with a paper and pencil and I know it was because God made me do it. I mean, he encouraged me to do it and I wrote down all the things about this man, all the things about this man that, that was good. And when I started the list, I ain't got nothing to write on this piece of paper. And then next thing I know, I had a long list. First of all, he gave me life. I wouldn't have been here if it hadn't have been for him. So in the end, what I'm telling you is I didn't need his forgiveness. I forgave him. Yeah, and then I could move on.
It's simple. It's simple. We make, everything that God gives us is simple. But we make it hard. Okay, and so when we, when we step out, when we step out with our list and the reasons why and why hasn't it come and all those things, okay? Then we make it hard on ourselves. So when we say, God, I don't have the answer, you know the answer, I'm gonna wait on the answer or you're gonna give me the release from it. Whichever way you work out, God is fine with me, you know?
And I think that's when we have to realize what is spiritual and what is natural. Our natural mind cannot just, we have to know this, that's the natural, and that's, like you said, giving up that control or giving up that natural, cause, and it's a spiritual thing, you know? God has to come in and he has to give us that control and it's, and to release that control to him and just be able to say that, but it's all that natural, like we need that apology, like you gonna apologize for stepping on my shoe at five. I mean, what is that? How's that gonna help me today? Because you stepped on my shoe at five, how?
Then you're gonna say, why did it take you so long to?
Yeah. Now you got something else. And I said, it's just always something added on to something. That's why, like I said, it, this is so, this, um, Bible topic is so, so useful and needed because it, it teaches us that we have to just let things go. And we have, you know, it's, I've watched kids all the time and how they will fight. And then five minutes later, they're best, best friends. But we as humans or adults cannot, oh, you said something to me five years ago and I'm keeping it. You know, we're holding it on to it. But we tell kids, let's go back and, you know, why can't, you know, and it's just the point of just letting things go and it's, it's very much needed.
Anybody else? Woman of wisdom who's quiet, bless your heart. Um, if we're all, if we're done, our essential thought is to achieve freedom in some areas, some things must be forgotten. And I'm asked, Mother Shirley, to end us in prayer.
Everyone, it's Saturday night. Thank you for letting us all get together. Keep us safe, keep the ones that weren't here tonight, keep them safe, bring them back next week. And keep your hand upon us and guide us the rest of this week. In the name of Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.